I'm going to call the meeting to order. It stands for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number four, approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting dated May 22, 2018. It was moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Brewer. And seconded by trustee Brewer. I'm so sorry. Any questions?
I just have a question to the village clerk. I'm sorry. For the village clerk, I noticed on here, and I don't know if this is a big thing, but generally when the residents come in and they make a statement or ask a question, you don't have any response from whoever answered their questions. Is that normal, or you just write down what they?
Write down their questions at the time. Most times, you really do not answer.
I can't hear you.
Please forgive me. Typically, you write down what the question or concern of the resident is.
Okay. Could that be added, or would that be a little?
It depends on the preference of all the trustees. Whatever you guys say is what I will do. But it would have to be each one of you in agreement and not some wanting it one way and the other, feeling that it should go the way it's normal.
I just thought it would be a good idea to give some kind of response to their concern.
Do you want to accept the response?
Okay. No response, okay.
Trustee Brewer, I would agree with you that for the circumstances where we do have a response, it should be included in the minutes. That would be my opinion.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Motion is carried. Item number four, approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the hold dated June 5, 2018.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
I have a comment. On your second page, where it says, "R. Lupina," doesn't it? Shouldn't that be?
Second page where it says what?
Shouldn't that be commented? You said committed on the latter. What is that supposed to be?
Can you tell me what that is?
Well, the second under R. Lupina, L-U-P-I-A, second page. Second page. L-U-P.
The third page.
Is that the third page?
Lupina?
Yeah, Lupina.
That should be commented.
Commented. Okay. And also, during this, effective June 5, I asked the question, was a notice sent out to the residents concerning this building matter? And that was not even referenced in the minutes. It should be noted in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
I'm going to make a comment that one of the reasons for my no vote on these minutes is going to be the fact that, to trustee Brewer's point, there's no clear indication of what's where in these minutes from page one to page three. It's like on page one, you start out understanding we're going to executive session and coming back, but then from there, it doesn't really outline prior to the commentary what it is that's being discussed. So you don't even know when we're going from discussion points to public comment. So that would be one of the reasons why my vote on this is going to be no.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. I would like to have that motion withdrawn because there was corrections so stated, so I would ask the trustees that made the motion to withdraw.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
And I'll entertain a motion for the minutes to be approved with the necessary correction.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number C, motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of the committee dated June 8, 2018. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Comment on June 8, special meeting on hold, I asked for environmental impact study for the resolution of 2017-10, study that was conducted, was a study conducted by Robinson Engineering, EPA, or any other independent contractor. You do have impact study, but to make it more clear, because anybody could do an impact study, we need a specific kind, the environmental impact study, so can you please include that in the minutes? And also, during the minute, I asked for the particular study, and the mayor asked me to come to his office on, well, come to the office on Monday, and he'll see if he had the report. And I just want to say that there was no report and no disclosure. Please add that to the minutes, or, you know.
After the meeting, as you discussed, is not a part of the minutes. The part of the minutes are, in fact, what actually took place that evening. So now, if you want it to go in this week's minutes, it can, but it would not go back, go into last week's.
Yes. Only thing I will change on this is the phrase, environmental impact study. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, I'll ask that the minutes, the one that made the motion and the one that made the second, withdrawn.
I withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the second.
Okay. And now I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes with the necessary corrections.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Todd. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Sawthew Village. Speakers allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate or counter replies or rebuttals. Please state your name.
Judy Cast, here. It's been a lot of administrations that I've stood up here and talked to. This is one of the first, I have to say, is the most disappointing and futile. The budget that you were calling a balanced budget, again, we went over the figures page by page, number by number, with people that know their stuff as well as you seem to think you know yours, but are calling it a balanced budget when it is not. On that, I will leave that. Derek, inasmuch as we are asked to speak directly to you rather than to any trustees, I don't think it is, while I'm speaking to you, I followed you through two campaigns closely. I gave you 100% loyalty through all those years. In the middle of the previous campaign, there were some issues directed toward me that I tried to talk to you about, that you, Mr. Wizwadi, your wife, Cecil, was aware of, but did nothing about, and they continued. I told you that I could not continue being in your campaign headquarters, but that I would continue to give you 100% loyalty, which I did up to and including the election day. I was at Rickover from before 6:00 a.m., and I was there until 7:30 p.m. to bring the final totals to your campaign office. I was there, I congratulated you, and I still gave you my loyalty. I still felt that there was something between us. But I've asked questions, I've used honesty, I bring backup with me when I talk, and you know that. With all the years you've known me, you know I won't get up here and say something unless I'm sure of it. And yet, you haven't been there. The loyalty has been one-sided. Therefore, tonight, I have to make it public. I can't live with a one-sided loyalty.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Beryl Wilkerson, and my question or comment is item two on the agenda, motion to recess to executive session with action to be taken. I'm under the impression that you all are getting together to go over this agenda and the items that are to be discussed in the meeting itself, but it would seem that that is not being, that is not the case. There's just too much, I won't say bickering, but too much disagreement. And I was wondering if that could be taken care of during this executive session, so that when you do come back into the session, you are together rather than divided.
Thank you, sir. Basically, when we went to the executive session, as I stated, it was a real estate concern, and we don't make real estate business known until after it's been taken care of. But as far as trying to stop someone or stop bickering back and forth, that's an individual's preference, if they feel that's what they want to do, that's what they will do. I cannot do anything about that, but I appreciate your comment. I appreciate it. I'm sure the trustees heard everything you said, so I appreciate that, too. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Dawn Collaple Flowers, and I'm here in the pair. This is my mom, Caroline Farmer. I'm here to get them help. Can you help me? I want to know what should I do about my neighbor across the street from me? They be sitting in their car just about every night, anything going on, starting at the beginning of the year. They're sitting in their car with their headlights on, beams through my window. And I had approached them, I asked them, can they turn their headlights off whenever they're sitting in their car? And they said, fine. They had stopped for a while, and then all of a sudden, they were doing it again and again. Their headlights be on high beam, and they be sitting in their car for about 20, 30, 40, 40 minutes to hours or so. And I had called the police a few times. They came out, and they told me that that time, when they come out with their headlights on, get them a car, they'll come over and check it out. Oh, okay, then. I called the next day. The police didn't show up. The third time the police came, they told me to get a darker curtain.
Get a who? I'm sorry, get a who?
They told me to get a darker curtain.
A darker curtain, huh?
Oh, darker curtain, okay.
So I was offended by that, because I felt like he didn't want to deal with the issue. So they did it again last night, and the other night, I had videotaped it, I got it on my phone, and I videotaped it, how long they've been sitting out there with their headlights on high beam. And I want to know what can be done about that, what can I do, what can y'all do to help me, you know, to stop them having their headlights on.
What street is this, ma'am? I'm not asking for your address, I just want to know which street.
21, I mean, 2116 in Peterson.
And this happens every?
Every night between, at 9 o'clock, between 9:00 and 10:00.
I just want to tell you, the police chief is here. He wrote, I'm sure he's noted it, and I'll follow up to make sure. And if he doesn't, please come and let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bernadine Hopkins. First thing I wanted to do is ask, well, I guess you would have to ask trustee Grant, when are the finance meetings held? When and where? The next question is, is it true that one of the cars used for code enforcement contains mold? Now, this is hearsay, so I'm running out.
Did you hear that contains?
Is it contains mold? M-O-L-D. Okay? That's just a rumor. I don't know if that's why I'm asking. Also, is it true that one of the police vehicles does not have a siren? So I wanted to know if that's true. Is it true that you presently drive one of the new police vehicles on a regular basis? And if yes, can you explain what purpose has been cited for this use? Next. Joe Wizwadi is noticeably in a position where numerous village funds are under his control. And I wanted to know what checks and balances, well, if there are any checks and balances, and, let me see, moving on. The next one is, what happened regarding the $250,000 transfer from the water fund? That has been brought up several times, but it's never been addressed. So I'd like to know, was it paid back and when? And this is regarding the budget meeting? I know, I don't know, we're going to go there. Where can I, as a resident, receive a breakdown regarding salaries, fringe benefits, and things in, you know, regarding village and administrative staff? Finally, the last thing is this. I asked you, I wanted to revisit a question previously that I asked you regarding our treasurer, Judith Sutton. I understand she was in some litigation, and I mentioned that, and I wanted to know, at the time you said you didn't know. So that's been a couple of weeks. So what I wanted to know was, have you found any new information, seeing as she is our treasurer? And the litigation did involve, excuse me, the bankruptcy of a bank called Amcor? And if I'm not mistaken, she was a executive, let me get it right.
Time is up.
Or executive administrator.
Time is up. First of all, there's no mold in the car. I don't know who your sources are. I don't even know where that came from. As far as the police vehicle has no siren, I don't know how you would know that unless it was trying to stop you and they couldn't put it on. So I have no idea how, and I never heard anything from the chief that there's a vehicle with no siren. I don't know how you would know that, like I stated before, unless they pulled you over, and a lot of times, if they don't put a siren on.
Sir, these are rumors. I'm just asking.
I'm trying to answer your rumors. Also, a rumor as far as driving a police vehicle, the vehicle that I have is not a police vehicle. It just says police interceptor. It's not a police vehicle. It's not even licensed as a police vehicle, ma'am. Licensed as a municipality car. And there's no way that Mr. Wizwadi has control over any money. You have seven trustees, six trustees up there, and you have a finance chairman and a treasurer. So to say whatever rumor that you've heard that he has control over money is ludicrous. I don't know where that one is.
I asked where the checks and balances are. That's what I asked.
Are you going to allow me to answer, or we going to go back and forth?
Yes, sir, but I'd like my question.
And I said that there is no way. You made the statement that Mr. Wizwadi has control over money. And I was telling you, there's no way that Mr. Wizwadi has control over any money in the village. As far as $250,000, I don't know, that's another rumor. I'm sure whoever you talked to, that trustee and all the rest of the trustees, but explain to them what happened at that particular time. And as far as talking about the treasurer's, whatever rumor that you'd say.
Well, that's fact. That's fact, sir.
One more time, ma'am, I'm not going to go back and forth. Miss, I'm not going to go back and forth.
I'm not allowing you to misrepresent what I'm saying to you, sir. I'm just saying, that's not a rumor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, sir, I would like the answer that you probably give me a long time ago.
I'm not going back and forth, ma'am.
You are our representative. I appreciate it if you would answer my question. We're not going back and forth, but I would appreciate it if you're addressing my question. And when you say it wrong, I'm going to let you know it's wrong.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome, but I'm still looking for my answer, sir.
I don't have an answer, ma'am. I don't talk about personnel at open meetings. I do not talk about personnel at open meetings. I was trying to explain it to you, but I do not talk about personnel at open meetings.
Pet Couch, since we are revisiting about the police car, I would just like a clarification. You said it is not a police car, it's a police interceptor. Was it purchased as a police car? Yes or no? Was it brought before the board? Yes or no? Did the board vote to let you have executive privilege, which I don't, I don't know if I've ever heard of a mayor having executive privilege. Maybe they do. Evidently, we do. But if, if that was brought before the board as a purchase from Old Plank Bank for three police vehicles, how come it was not brought before the board prior to one of them being chosen to be used for executive purposes?
First of all, ma'am, I don't know what executive privilege is myself, so I don't know where that came from. And as far as the police, as far as the police car, as I just stated, it has on their police vehicle, like Ford has Ford, Chevy has Chevy, they have different labels, that's what that was labeled as, as a police interceptor, and that's only pertaining to the engine. And if you ask the police officers after the meeting, they will let you know that pertains to the engine, not to the vehicle. There is no such thing as a police car. They make it a police car by outfitting it as a police car. But all the cars and vehicles come out as a vehicle, and they, and they are making it to, as far as executive, like I said, I don't know what executive privilege is. I have no idea. Did the trustees know about the purchase? Yes, they did. Did they vote on it? Yes, they did. Did they know exactly what I was doing? Yes, they did. So, I mean, wouldn't have been able to purchase anything without the consent of the trustees.
Trustee Bernice Brewer, I have a question. Margaret, if you could do me a favor and do some research and find out, is there any president that says trustees are not supposed to have a comment or something during the, during the open meetings? Can you please address that? Can you provide that to me in writing? You know, if we're not able to comment or, you know, give out submissions or comments or anything, I would really like to know that in writing. And the second thing is, I would like to address certain things that residents brought up. The $250,000 that everybody seemed to be interested in today was taken from the Tiff Board, and as far as I know, 250 was used to pay back Tiff Board. We never got an explanation of who gave authorization to move that money. It was moved on November 24, 2017. We never moved, we never voted on it, and we never moved it. Secondly, for the police cars, we voted for three police cars. The police department only got two. We never voted for a municipality car. I don't know where that came from, but as far as I know, we voted for three police cars, and we have the ordinance where everybody approved it, and the police chief, even during the budget hearings, said we only got two. So the third car is up in question, so just to address some of the residents' concerns. So if you could give me that in writing, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Someone mentioned about the police. Hello? Somebody just mentioned about. Orlando Murray. Somebody just mentioned about the police sirens. There's no police sirens. I've been out here 15 years. There's no police sirens out here. There are police lights. One almost hit me the year that I moved out here, 2007, okay? With no lights. He had lights, so if I didn't look in my rearview mirror, I would have got smacked, and I moved out the way. But there's no police sirens. There are lights.
Thank you. Then what else? Item number six, reports of officers. Mayor's report. I'm very pleased to announce that Set Enterprises here in Sawthew Village has begun, begun expansion of their operations. Set will begin installation of a laser blanking line, the very first in North America. This is scheduled to begin this summer. Set provides stamped arts for Ford Motor Company and has
And the second thing is, uh, I would like to address certain things that residents brought up. Uh, the $250,000 that everybody seemed to be interested in today was, uh, taken from the tip four, and as far as I know, 250 was used to pay back tip four. We never got an explanation of who gave authorization to move that money. It was moved on November 24th, 2017. We never moved, we never voted on it, and we never moved it. Secondly, for the police cars, we voted for three police cars. The police department only got two. We never voted for a municipality car. I don't know where that came from, but as far as I know, we voted for three police cars, and we have the ordinance where everybody approved it, and the police chief, even during the budget hearings, said we only got two. So, the third car is up in question, so just to address some of the residents' concerns. So, if you could give me that in writing, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Someone, uh, mentioned about the police, uh...
You can hear.
Hello? Somebody just mentioned about...
Please say your name, Renee.
Orlando, Missouri. Somebody just mentioned about the police sirens. There's no police sirens. I've been out here 15 years. There's no police sirens out here. There are police lights. One almost hit me the year that I moved out here, 2007, okay? With no lights. He had lights, so if I didn't look in my rearview mirror, I would've got smacked, and I moved out the way. But there's no police sirens. There are lights.
Thank you. Then what else? At number six, reports of officers. Um, the mayor's report. I'm very pleased to announce that Set Enterprises here in Sauk Village has begun, begun expansion of their operations. Set will begin installation of a laser blanking line, the very first in North America. This is scheduled to begin this summer. Set provides stamped arts for Ford Motor Company and has been in business in Sauk Village for over two decades. The new line will go into production in 2019 to produce blanks for exposed and unexposed automotive stampings for the Ford Motor Company. Set and Wayne Steel, which are both located right off of Cottage Grove, right before you get to the, um, railroad tracks going north, employs 177 full-time UAW employees in Sauk Village. They expect installation to be completed by the spring of 2019 and will be adding additional personnel. Set expects to invest over $17 million in their expansion. I would also like to point out to the residents and to the trustees that after tonight's vote, on the accounts payable, our aging report will be reduced to $61,029.41, far below $318,337.26 that trustee Brewer pointed out last, yesterday at our budget meeting. This is the lowest it has been in many years. According to the past village audit reports, this aging report routinely skyrockets to over $1 million. I want to thank all the private heads and trustees who have contributed to this reduction. We are making progress, and the numbers speak for themselves. I am so pleased that we are making progress to get in our financial house in order. Thank you so much. Justice clerk, report. Village engineer Jim Darnett.
Thank you, mayor. Just a reminder that the bid opening for the 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue project is this Friday. It'll begin until late summer. And that concludes my report. Thank you, mayor.
I've just been, um, asked, and this is my, it's oversight from me, and I'm sorry that I didn't think of it, but, um, I'll ask now for a moment of silence for one of our own. If anyone's been here that while they know, Grant Selby used to be a police chief here in the village. He has passed away, so I would like to have a moment of silence for him. Thank you so much. Trustees' report.
I have a question.
For, uh, Mrs. Darnett?
Yes.
Sure.
Uh, Mrs. Darnett, can you explain to us how the bid process works? It's my understanding that the 223rd project, we approved the ordinance or resolution, I can't remember what, for $685,000 or something? And, uh, in yesterday's, well, in the budget, we have, um, 200 from the CDV block grant that's coming, and then we all have $200,000 from the MFT. That's like $400,000. So, my, my point to you is, where are we gonna get that extra money, $285,000? And is that gonna be carried over to the next year? Or, just explain to us how the billing process, and how do you, uh, determine, at what point do you cut off, 'cause we aren't gonna have any money? Uh, and how do you explain that all the MFT funds that generally is gonna come in, the $200,000, is gonna be used for this specific project when we have the rest of the village to address, like, street and roads, um, you know, Wagner, Yates, and all that? So, I wanna know, how do you commit your, commit the projects to, uh, the monies that's coming in? How, how does those projects work? That's, that's, that's my question. So, we'll know. 'Cause we don't have enough money, so I'm just asking.
So, specifically for this project, it is 80% federally funded.
Okay.
So, the $600 and some thousand dollars that the project entails, that includes everything, from the design process all the way through construction. So, some of that money has already been allocated, already paid in, in previous years, so I don't know what the remainder is, but the remainder, only 80% needs to be paid by the village. So, that, that $200,000 allocation in the budget, I presume, that's what's going to be utilized to pay for the village's portion of the project, so the village certainly has enough money to cover it.
So, you're saying that's $200,000 from the CD, um, block grant, except?
Um, this past year, we were not awarded the CDBG grant.
So, we gonna use MFT funds?
Yes, and we have sufficient MFT funds to cover the cost of the project.
Well, uh, in that case then, Mohan, what's the balance in the MFT funds?
Uh, trustee Brewer, right now we have approximately about $150,000 in MFT bank account. It is approximation, I can let you know.
So, we'll, we'll get money every month, right?
We will have sufficient money by then.
Okay, but still, if we use all the MFT monies, what about the rest of the village?
Okay, so every year, we go through a similar process where we, uh, we take into account how much money is coming in through MFT funds, through CDBG funds, if we've received a grant, and then the current balance that's in that MFT fund. And then we determine what repairs need to be made, and then there's this, a discussion held with, um, public works director in terms of priorities, and then we make a decision on whether we're going to move forward with a street program that year. We had this discussion back in winter of this year, and it was decided that the village did not have enough funds to do an independent MFT, um, resurfacing project, so we just went forward with the federally funded 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue project that we're doing this year. So, we're banking some of that money so that when next year comes around, we'll have that additional fund to do, hopefully, a street program, and hopefully, we'll get a CDBG grant to go along with that, and then we could do a significant resurfacing program.
So, you, the, uh, the CDV grant money did come in this year, you said? Is that, if I'm not mistaken?
Right.
So, however, wasn't it in the budget? If, if I'm not mistaken? Um, okay. That's the end of my question.
Then, then your comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustees' report, Ms. Judy Suston.
Um, yes. Um, thank you, mayor and trustees. Um, since my last report, uh, we've worked really hard to finalize the budget, which I know the board will be voting on this evening. This was a difficult budget because we did need to develop a balanced, um, budget focus. Um, to accomplish this, we needed to reduce expenses to match our revenues. Um, we needed to recognize that in the past five years, the village's property taxes have been reduced by $612,000, and this needed to be reflected in our spending levels. Um, in addition, um, we have the auditors, um, from Miller Cooper on site this week, next week, and the week after. Last year, the auditors didn't even come to the village until the end of the summer, the beginning of fall, and the year-end audited financials were not completed until seven months after the end of the fiscal year. This year, in accordance with industry best practices, we are targeting to be completed much, much sooner than that. To get to this point, though, we've worked very hard to clean up the balance sheet to make it presentable to the auditors. Um, previously, we had negative cash balances that were not accurate, the inter-fund borrowings needed to be reconciled and validated, the fixed asset balances needed to be scrutinized and corrected, um, the fee income allowances needed to be corrected, accruals needed to be processed. And to do this, um, we did work closely with our software vendor, Civic, as well as our accountants. Um, this concludes my report.
Thank you.
Got a question. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, one more question for Mrs. Darnett. I forgot to ask.
Right.
I think it was two meetings ago, I don't know if it was you or the mayor, somebody was supposed to give us something in writing, uh, because the Osling grant was only $227,000. Somebody was supposed to give us something in writing that shows that the vendor knows not to go over $227,000. Uh, can we, do you, do you have that in writing, or where should I get that? It was promised to the board that we would have something in writing saying, "The vendor knows he's not supposed to get over $227,000." There was an ordinance that we approved for over $500,000, so we're supposed to get something in writing, so...
I could look at the meeting minutes. That might be, uh, a good source of information where that discussion was held.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, I can testify that, um, that that's been made completely clear to the contractor that we can't go over that dollar amount.
Well, a lot of times, things are made clear to somebody and it's always interpreted somewhere else, so we, I would appreciate something in writing that the vendor knows he's not supposed to go over $227,000.
Well, and understand that we're, the village is in control of the situation because the contract has been reduced to the amount of funding that the village has. So, if the contractor were to just go rogue and start doing work that they weren't approved to do, we wouldn't approve payment for them.
Yeah, but it's an ordinance up to $500,000, so, I mean, I don't, um, that's another game. Maybe you should explain that process because I understand how we could approve an ordinance over $500,000, but the grant says $227,000. That in itself, uh, uh, we should err in caution because we put this ordinance out there saying the vendor could go up to $500-some-thousand when we only have $227,000, and that's a reimbursable grant. So, I, I, maybe the process is different, uh, or, or we're not, um, we don't quite know what, how it works, but it seems like it needs to be, if we're gonna go out for a bid, the bid shouldn't be more than $227,000, 'cause that's what we have money for. But we actually had a bid for $500-some-thousand.
So, this is a, a, a typical occurrence, and we have contract language that addresses it, that states that the municipality will only be able to fund a certain amount.
Okay.
We have no control over how the bids come in, um, and this is the way it works in the village of Sauk Village, as well as all the other clients that my firm has experience with. So, sometimes the bids come in way too high, and then we will do exactly what we've done in this instance, where we knock down the price to the level that the village has funding.
Okay.
And we do that through eliminating items that are in the scope of the project, and this is no different.
Okay, so we'll get something in writing saying that it shouldn't go over $227,000?
I will get those meeting minutes to you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also have a question for the treasurer. Uh, on page, uh, 25 of the budget, uh, it has a statement that says, "The mayor and his destiny may authorize budget transfer within a fund." This budget isn't, um, can you explain to me how it's a say, "The mayor and his destiny" in a budget? And it seems to me that's stripping the, uh, the trustees of their fiduciary duties, um, and that's illegal in itself, so can you explain to me why that's in the budget? And why shouldn't it be taken out?
Uh, this speaks to budget amendments. Uh, so, any amendments to the budget, if there's expenses that are gonna go over the approved appropriation budget, need to come to the trustees for their approval. But if there are line item switches within a fund, the mayor is authorized to be able to make those. So, if, you know, there is, you know, professional service, more professional services, but we're gonna take it out of supplies, and we're still going to make sure that we live within the appropriation budget, that's what we're talking about here. Uh, so that's not taking any, um, approval authority away from, uh, the trustees at all, because you approved the appropriation in total.
But we didn't approve the mayor to do that. That's our job. I'm quite sure trustee is supposed to...
Anything else? Trustee, um...
Huh?
Anything else, trustee?
Page 25.
Anything else?
I think it should be taken out.
Reports of departments, finance, and administration. Director Mohan Rao.
Thank you, mayor and the board. Now, I have a couple of reports. Uh, I have finished DEA financial report for the year-end, uh, 4/30/2018. The DOJ requires we are to be compliant with the DEA as well as DOJ. I have provided a copy of the report to Chief of Police, uh, Mr. Kowalski, and also I have provided a copy to you, mayor, also. And we are compliant until June of 2019. The funds will be coming as and when, um, the, the officer assigned to that work carries out his responsibilities. We have collected from Illinois Comptroller's Office in the amount of $17,913.14 towards J and P tickets, that is for the month of May. Uh, we have collected the real estate tax levy receipts for the month of May in the amount of $87,809.68. We have also received a FEMA grant for the fire department in the amount of $3,371. Uh, the auditors will be here, they came here once again on June 11th, 2018, and will be here until June 29th to carry out the auditing duties, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department Chief Alstovragan.
Thank you, mayor and board. For the period from May 16th through June 6th, the fire department responded to 32 calls. I had eight fire alarms, two vehicle accidents, 10 ambulance assists, six carbon monoxide calls, and six automatic gates to our surrounding towns. Just make a note that in the next four or five days, it's gonna get up in the upper 90s. You wanna keep an eye out for the elderly and our neighbors, and be advised that I've got people at my station for a cooling center from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And if need be, I'll keep them in there longer. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Police Department Chief, Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. For the reporting period, we responded to 6885 calls for service with the 11 arrests. Uh, cases of interest, I'd like to clarify, uh, an incident which occurred on May 29th on the 2000 block at 217th place. A complaint called to report her partner was going to her house to break out all the windows. When the police arrived, the offender had left the area. Searching the area, officers found the offender, um, driving and avoiding stop signs. The offender was pulled over and arrested for several traffic violations, including driving on a suspended driver's license. The offender was, uh, taken into custody and given an I-bond, which is a recongruent bond, released and told not to return to the 2000 block at 217th place. Later that afternoon, the offender, of course, returned to the address, and the police were called again. Victim advised he was willing to sign complaints against the offender. So, with that, the responding officers attempted to arrest the offender. When the officer advised the offender was under arrest, she ran from that officer. Officer waited for backup and again advised the offender she was under arrest. The offender pulled away from the officer and began to run. At this time, the officer deployed his taser and tased the offender. Once tased, the offender fell and hit her face on the pavement. The officers called the ambulance, since the offender sustained cuts and bruises from falling. The offender was taken to the hospital and released back to our custody for the department, uh, for processing of the arrest. While in custody, the offender was given her cell phone to make phone calls, which, uh, she did not do and proceeded to go on Facebook. The offender made accusatory remarks about the Sauk Village Police Department, which were completely false and untrue. This matter is now in the court system to be adjudicated accordingly. I just wanted to make that, uh, make that clear, what, what actually happened. To some better news, National Night Out is starting to take, uh, take shape, which is set for August 7th of 2018. If you'd still like to volunteer or have any suggestion, feel free to call me or email me at SaukVillagePD@gmail.com, or message me on Facebook, call me direct, 708-753-5151. Uh, I met with Director, FBI Director Christopher Ray on Tuesday, May 29th. I voiced my opinion about the continued gun violence we see in and around our area. The director agreed that gun violence is a, a big issue. He said that until there are set, set sentencing guidelines adopted by each state, similar to the federal sentencing guidelines, the disparity among state jurisdictions and their sentencing of offenders will continue to be in... sentencing of offenders will continue to be an issue. If anyone would like to talk about this further, please feel free to stop by the police station, or we can discuss this further at a monthly public safety meeting. Uh, also, and lastly, I have received five letters of appreciation from Ms. Kim Krasic, the Bloom Trail truancy officer. The letters were commending Detective Sergeant Rob Grossman, Sergeant Chris Mizak, Officer Josh Morris, Officer Matt Zylas, and Officer Michael Huffnagle for their service, and assisting her with home visits throughout the year, uh, of the Sauk Village truancy offenders. And to save time, I won't read all five, but they pretty much said the following. Dear Chief Kowalski, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude and appreciation for the assistance of Officer Morris and for his considerate service displayed by assisting me on truancy home visits. As a second-year truancy officer at Bloom Trail High School, I've learned the high demand of the Sauk Village Police Department, and I'm truly thankful for being able to work with them in between calls, and as well as for such an experienced officer. I'd like to recognize Officer Morris from the Sauk Village Police Department who assisted me on home visits. Officer Morris conducted over one hundred home visits with me. Officer Morris taught me more, uh, taught me how to be vigilant in the community when I conducted home visits on my own. This was very helpful when Officer Morris was busy dealing with other official police business. Without his assistance, I would not be able to reduce the truancy rate at Bloom Trail High School. Officer Morris is an admirable professional who displays profound service. Officer Morris is an exceptional employee who is an asset to the Sauk Village Police Department and to the law enforcement profession. With great appreciation, Kim Krasic, Bloom Trail. Uh, that you can see if you'd like to, to contact me. That's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Emergency Management Agency Director Alvin Maverick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. Uh, in conjunction with the fire department's, uh, report of calls that we assisted on, uh, tomorrow, Thursday the fourteenth, uh, we have our monthly SMART meeting. It's gonna be held in Hanover Township, uh, it'll be at seven o'clock tomorrow evening. Uh, just a quick reminder, too, school is out, please be careful while you're driving, watch out for the little kids, uh, playing in the roadway, uh, running between cars, in and out between cars. And touching on the note, uh, of Chief Stoffray about the heat wave coming in this weekend. Also, too, make sure you check on, uh, you know, kids in cars and pets in cars, you know, it gets pretty hot in the cars when the kids and pets are in there, so, uh, that concludes my report, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Economic Director, Director Joseph Wizwati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, pleased to report that all but three businesses have renewed their licenses, uh, with us thus far. Uh, we've collected over fifty thousand dollars in business license fees. Likewise, we have issued over a hundred contractor licenses. Thus far this year, we have a total revenue of twenty-four thousand for those. Liquor license renewals were mailed out, uh, in May and are due at the end of June. Since June first, nine certificates of occupancy were applied, applied for. Five were approved, four have not yet been approved. We've begun validating ownership with the Cook County Assessor's Office, as well as the Cook County Recorder of Deeds, to ensure that the owner or authorized agent is making the application for the certificates of occupancy. We are also verifying that the work performed was permitted by the village. It is worth noting that failure to obtain a permit results in the cost of the permit doubling, and the owner could face a citation as well. The village issued thirty-nine building permits in the month of May for a total of three hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine, ninety cents in improvements, and total permit fees collected were five thousand, five hundred, seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Given the numerous inconsistencies discovered in the process of issuing certificates of occupancy, we are working on standardizing our forms, and the village will be, uh, using those going forward. Uh, we will also be working with Bloom Township Assessor and Cook County Assessor's Office to ensure that erroneous exemptions are removed from investment properties, as we've discovered many exemptions on investment properties which have been in place for many years. We've also identified, uh, vacant homes with the Assessor's Office, um, this will also improve our overall property tax collection rate. The Board has before this evening, uh, resolution granting a Class Eight tax classification for property being purchased by Three Star Realty LLC. The renovations being done to the building would not be possible but for the Class Eight designation. The Class Eight has been part of the RFP already approved by the Board. The Board also has before a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus property at seventeen-seventeen Sauk Trail, which is the old abandoned laundromat. The village issued the RFP, and the two individual bidders, um, put their bids in for the property. The winning bidder placed a bid for forty thousand dollars, that is Tony Abazir, who is closing on the property under Three Star Realty LLC. We will be closing on the property Friday, June twenty-second, at nine AM. As the Mayor reported earlier tonight, Set Enterprises is in the process of expansion at the Sauk Village facility. They've begun working with ComEd on upgrading the electrical service to accommodate the power demand for the laser cutting equipment. As a final thought, residents are encouraged to get Village Vehicle stickers, which are, have already, the sale has already begun here at Village Hall. There are only sixteen days left to get yours. These must be displayed on your vehicle by midnight, July first, or you will be given a citation. The cost of the Village Vehicle stickers double after June thirtieth. Also, it is noted, Village Hall will be closed Saturday, June thirtieth, so get in line and get it done quick.
Okay.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
You got a question? Uh, Mr. Wizwati, uh, the Class Eight that you're asking for, for, uh, properties at seventeen-seventeen and seventeen-twenty-one is the old laundromat? Now, I asked the, uh, well, Friday I asked to have a copy of the site assessment, and according to the mayor, he told me to come in Monday and get it, but, uh, when I came, he said there wasn't one, so, um, I'm asking you, is there a site, was there a site man, assessment done on that particular property?
No, that is correct. We do not have a site assessment of that property.
Okay, now, it, now, it's my understanding that the, uh, laundromat was one of the, uh, sites that EPA inspected during the water crisis, and that, um, it closed soon after, whereas because of the cleaning service that went into the ground? And yet, we are trying to sell this property to somebody without giving them some kind of disclosure or site assessment, and we don't have a site assessment, so what liability do we have if they come back, like, I know you said "as-is," but you, uh, we don't have a disclosure form or anything, uh, from the buyer, or we should have it in our files? Uh, because the, the soil was contaminated and they were forced to clean it up, and they were closed, but I'm wondering, are we telling the, the buyers that we had a problem there before?
Okay, the, two points. The first one I'll, I'll address is pretty simple. In the purchase agreement with Mr. Abazir, Mr. Abazir, and in the RFP, it stated that the owner will be buying the property as-is, and the village will not have any, um, in other words, the buyer's not gonna come back and make any claims against the village. As to the second point, the IEPA assessment that you're discussing, um, did not include that property. Um, there was no indication on the report that was issued, uh, through the IEPA, uh, for this property, and there was no cleanup or any contamination noted in the IEPA study that was done. I saw the, the study back in, gosh, I think it was twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen, and I, I do not recall that property being listed on that at all.
Oh, so we actually have something?
No, we don't, that's what I'm trying to explain, there was nothing indicated on that.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
So as it is, so, um, it's my understanding, whenever you buy a property, commercial or residence, in the state of Illinois, you have to disclose something, so you're saying there was nothing there in that particular, is that what you're gonna say, there's nothing there on that site?
To my knowledge.
Okay.
And to everything that I've seen, that is a correct statement, there is nothing, to my knowledge, that would indicate that. And as I said, the, the buyer is buying the property as-is.
All right, and another thing is that since the building was built before nineteen seventy-eight, there's no asbestos problem in there either?
To my knowledge, there is no issues. If there are, then the owner, the buyer of the property would have to remediate that
Okay, uh, force of committees and commissions, Senior Advisory Council Chairman Emmett Farmer, someone please give him a mic, please.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Our next, uh, meeting for the senior advisory committee is this Thursday, tomorrow, June fourteenth, and of course, all are welcome. We are finalizing our trip for the seniors to the Four Winds Casino on July twenty-eighth, and should have flyers out in the next couple of weeks and more information, uh, probably after our meeting on tomorrow. We also are planning a grandchildren's day, where our senior grandparents can invite their grandchildren out for some hamburgers and hot dogs in the picnic area behind Village Hall for August twenty, uh, twenty-fifth. More details to come. Our village clerk has graciously made, graciously made the senior committee, uh, new applications for space usage for the senior center, so anyone that, uh, needs to use the senior center and, uh, applications and new applications are at the front desk. Also, rental applications, of course, can be obtained there as well, uh, for the senior center. Our senior ceramics class has moved their classes to every Friday, um, from Wednesday from nine AM to twelve PM during the summer, and where they can hope to acquire more seniors. Also, our June calendar's out, and I do have some copies for you all, and, uh, we got two posted, one at the door, front door entrance, and one is back door entrance of the senior center. And please don't forget our game night every first and third Friday for new time, uh, six PM to ten PM. Please join us, uh, this Friday, as this is the third Friday, and that's all I have.
Thank you. The other calendar, the past one. Uh, reports of trustees and standing committees and comments. Public Service Committee Trustee Bernice Brewer.
The Public Service Committee is gonna have a, uh, energy-saving event, uh, located at the pool. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, anyone's starting with this, okay? Public Service Committee is gonna have a event on June twenty-second from four thirty to, uh, it's Friday, June twenty-second from four thirty to seven. This is, uh, an event put on by Nycor, and, uh, it's gonna be held at the Candlelight, um, Pool House, and this is only for those residents of Candlelight and Weatherstone, and I'm gonna try to get Carlisle Estates in there. But if you come to the seminar, it gives you free thermostats, free aerators, free, um, showerheads, um, they'll wrap your pipes. The reason come we chose, uh, the Candlelight, uh, Pool House is because of the nature of the houses in Weatherstone and Candlelight, they all look the same type, modular and trailer, uh, houses. If this, um, event is successful, we'll move over to the village, and another reason come we holding in Candlelight, because their funds are limited and their program ends June thirtieth. Uh, once we do the, uh, three subdivisions over there, we'll do the rest of the village once the funding becomes available around September first. Uh, I, I employ, if you know anybody who lives in Candlelight, Weatherstone, or Camp, uh, Carlisle Estates, to come in, all this stuff is free. There's a free assessment, they come in and let you know you can do, there's an energy-saving, um, devices that they provide for your home. It's good, and it doesn't cost anything regardless of your income, so I employ anybody who knows to come on over to the Pool House on June twenty-second from the, uh, from four thirty to seven to, uh, sign up for the, uh, event. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Budget and Finance Committee Trustee Roger Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, last month, May, we did not have a meeting. Uh, we will have another meeting, uh, June twentieth, which is the third Wednesday of the month, uh, here at seven PM in a rotunda. And then, again, tonight, we'll be voting on appropriations for the budget tonight, and, uh, as, as we had discussions yesterday, is, uh, balance revenues, duly of expenses, and, uh, look forward to the vote. That concludes my report.
That's it, thank you. Parks and Recs and Youth Services, um, I'm looking currently, looking, and it's in the website, for a recreation, uh, part-time recreation director, and also, I'm also looking for volunteers for an event that we would wanna put on, um, in July, so I would like to, I'm asking for any volunteers that would like to help us coordinate this, and it will be, uh, first Friday or Thursday in July here behind, uh, Village Hall, so I'm looking to have this event, and I'm looking for volunteers to help, uh, put this event on. That's all that I have. Housing Intergovernmental, Trustee Tate, no report. Orders Review Committee, Trustee Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Orders Review Committee met this last Monday, and we are finishing up the Fossil Arm Ordinance, there's a few things that need to be changed, and then I will present it to the Board. Also, our next meeting, well, for the summer, what we've decided to do, we're changing the meeting, we normally, um, would have it at six-thirty at night, the next meeting is gonna be July ninth at ten AM in the morning, and it will be here at the rotunda. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Elizabeth Zuppan, I'm sorry, Trustee Beth Zuppan.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did not meet tonight since we had this meeting instead, unfortunately, so we will be doing a little bit of, uh, work behind the scenes relative to National Night Out, and I would remind the Board that National Night Out is the first Tuesday in August, so I would suggest that we cancel the committee meeting that night, if you would take that under advisement, and then all of us should be out back for the event instead. Um, the other thing, I'm gonna change gears here now, Public Works Director Weller was not here tonight, but did share a report with us, so I'm just gonna go through a few of his items for the public's benefit. Um, he's mentioned a concern about garbage being dumped at Caraway Avenue Court, where staff has cleaned it up, but if anybody happens to see it happening, and certainly not just there, but anywhere within the community, be a part of the solution and call the police if you see it happening, please, you have to speak up. Uh, street sweep started this week, asking all residents not to throw debris, put debris in the roadways, tickets could be issued if you're parked there as well, so please keep that in mind as that continues. He's also mentioned the fact that they have part-time seasonal help to help with the grass cutting and some of the other items this summer. The first worker, uh, I believe was supposed to start work this week, but there are still some open positions, so again, those, uh, posts are out on the village website if you are interested in, in any of those. The flushing is on the east side of town, that would be east of Torrance Avenue, south of Sauk Trail until completed, I believe that's going on currently. He's also mentioned that the ball field demolition has started, but has been very slow-going because of other priorities and emergencies that have been creeping up, but as they can, they're working on that. He also mentioned, uh, good, the, speaking of the grass cutting, it continues at several locations, Carroll Park and all the fields, uh, the pump houses, Sauk Trail, Torrance Parkway, Village Hall, Sauk Point, Marquee Field, miscellaneous lots, Carlisle Estates, Orion, um, again, slow-going because of the weather with a lot of the rain recently. Um, and that's pretty much what he had referenced there, and that concludes my report and comments, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Trustee Carter hasn't been given a committee yet, uh, we're still formulating that, but at the next board meeting, he will have one, but I would like to ask if he has any comments, and I'm sure he's gonna be, uh, at the next committee meeting, asking for volunteers, but at this time, Mr. Carter, do you have any comments for the Board?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. The only comment I, I have is that I'll be glad to accept that responsibility and try to do it to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, new business. We have a add-on to accounts payable to everyone. First of all, get this add-on. Okay. So I would accept the motion to, to approve accounts payable with the new sum of $437,374.17. Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
I have a question and comment. Mister Mayor, um, I ask every time we have accounts payable for the, uh, copies of the invoices for Dr. Stroud and Olson and Sturz, and also, uh, well, I'm just starting to ask for Lab. Now, uh, seems to me that Dr. Stroud is being paid about $6,000 a month approximately. And, uh, from a financial standpoint, and she's only part-time, I'd like to look, uh, take a copy of those, uh, look at those invoices that she submitted. And also Olson and Sturz, some of those invoices that's, uh, included on the, uh, not this account payable, but other accounts payable are really old. I'd like to take a look at those to see what just, what are we paying Dr. Stroud and Olson and Sturz for their services? Now, uh, I understand that the trustees vote for them, but they should know what's in those invoices. Every month she, uh, she gets a payment about five or six thousand dollars, and Olson and Sturz get like 19 or 20. I'm just averaging, I'm not saying that's the exact figure. But I'd like to take a look at those invoices to see exactly just what we are paying for. And especially since Lab seems to be the, uh, the attorney, uh, requested by most people. I'd like to see what we paying them for too, when they show up on, uh, accounts payable. I don't think they're on this one, but, uh, I would like a copy of all those, uh, invoices. We could take a look at what just what we are paying her for. And Olson and Sturz too.
What do you mean by remove?
I mean, I don't know, do, do, uh, do you move the, remove the payment until we take a look at it, or what?
You can always take a look at the accounts payable, uh, trustee, if we're here.
I got a copy of accounts payable.
You said you wanted to look at her invoices.
Yes.
You can always take a look at invoices, come in and ask to look at it.
Mister Mayor, I have been asking for copies of her invoices for, every time we get accounts payable, you know, you can't go in there and ask for, Mohan doesn't give you a copy. You know, you said, well, he said, go to the mayor. The mayor doesn't have a copy. I'd like to see a copy. We voted on to pay her, and we never gets copy. We never get a copy. You say, meet you in the back, meet you in the back, never get a copy. Send a formal request, never get a copy. Uh, you, um, there's nothing on your, Sam? Uh, Mom, I'm sorry. But I never get a copy. I would like to see a copy of these invoices that we're paying. We, we're voting to pay them, we should see them. We should know, trustees should know what we paying taxpayers' dollars.
You can see, as I stated, you can see a copy of all the invoices, trustee.
I want a copy of it, I don't wanna just see.
Will you disseminate it like you did before when all the papers?
Yeah, that's right. Uh, any trustee up there wants to see one, I can give you a copy. And it's public information.
Then you can, I got stated before, you can get a copy.
Okay, that's, I'm gonna, we go tomorrow and get copies of everything that you gave Mohan.
What's that again? What's that again?
Mm-hmm. Everything, I have been asking for copies of her invoices.
Oh, okay. Yes, you get a copy of the invoice.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And copies of Olson and Sturz?
Any other questions?
Comment.
Okay.
Comment. So I noticed that we'll be paying Olson about $21,000. I just wanna point out there, if I'm not mistaken, this is, like you mentioned, I made a comment earlier, how we drastically decreased our agent report. And I think that, if I'm not mistaken, this is one of the last few bills that we have for Olson that's outstanding. So if the council bill was passed tonight, we will not owe them very much more as of right now.
Unless there's some new bills that are being brought up, yes.
Correct.
And, um, in the last six months, we've paid Olson and Sturz close to $250,000. So, yes, we're trying to catch up, and that's what we owe from 2016. So, since 2016, so we paid them, and since January, close to $250,000. So you should be able to get, I'm surprised you get a copy of that either. Any other question?
I just have a quick question. You mentioned that you paid down the agent report to $61,000?
Yeah.
Was that paid off due to the tax anticipation warrant loan? The agent report has been reduced to $61,000. We owe 300,700,000. Where did the money come from? Is it from the tax anticipation warrant? We had like 400,000 left, I would say?
Portion of the money came from, uh, the rest of the debt.
Okay.
Portion of money.
Can't hear you.
Portion of money came from, uh, tax levy revenue, and a portion of money that was from a tax anticipation warrant. Uh, the three bills that were paid were from tax anticipation warrants.
Thank you.
So we can have a breakdown of the 550, of the 535?
Sure, sure. I can send it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay. No, I'll be in office, I can copies those invoices.
Sure.
Any other question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tate. Mister Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Present.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution of the sale of the Village of Salt Village to surplus property, better known as the property, um, for the clean, I'm sorry, cleaning, and also for the laundromat.
So moved.
Second.
Move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the Village of Salt Village, Cookinwell County's authorizing the Class 8 property tax incentive for the property known, commonly known as the 1717 and 1721 East Salt Trail, the laundromat again, and the, um, cleaners.
So moved.
Second.
Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance to ratify the 2018, 2019 appropriations for the fiscal year of 2018 and 2019, better known as our budget.
So moved.
Second.
Move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Question?
Comment? Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, we have repeatedly, well, I have repeatedly asked you, asked for breakdown of salaries and fringe benefits, um, and, uh, for any trustee to want to approve this, when they have no idea of the increases, decrease of what it, what any individual employee is gonna get, because it's all lump sum. It's one reason why, uh, I've, we vote no for this, because the information is not there. We have asked and asked for this information, the budget has been out there for a month, and nobody wants to actually give us a breakdown of salaries, which is public information, but we can't get it. The second thing, uh, the second reason, um, why, what I have a concern is that the scenario that, um, the treasurer gave us about operational transfer. This is not clear. It was not brought to, before the board to see if we wanna do operational transfer. This is something, I guess, whoever decided to do. Uh, there's no written guidelines or anybody from the attorney explains what operational transfers are. So we need to know what we're getting into, because in this budget, there's a lot of operational transfer where they're moving money from one point to the other, and it's, and we're never gonna pay it back. According to Illinois State Staffing, you have to pay money back within the, uh, but, uh, within the fiscal year. But for, if you use this operational budget scenario, we don't have to pay it back for some reason. This public question was not brought before the board, nor was it brought to the people. People not, are gonna give us control laws to move money and, and spend the money or when it, when, uh, where, wherever we feel like it. You know, this question has to be gone to the people, and it was never given to the people, nor was it even brought before the board. This is something, I don't know who decided to do this, but, uh, I think we need further discussion on it, and something in writing from the attorney saying this is legal for us to do. If it's legal, it's fine, we'll go with it. But right now, we have been in, we have been, uh, using the same mess for the transfer for the last, since this inception. All of a sudden, it's these operational transfers, and for some reason, we're not gonna pay back the water fund. How many residents know out there that you, you gotta pay your water funds for day-to-day operation? That's not fair to residents and to myself, 'cause I don't want my tax dollars being used for day-to-day operation. If used for the water fund, I want it to stay for water-related items. And not only that, MFT funds, you move money in and out of MFT funds. It's ridiculous that we call it operational transfer, uh, transfer is a transfer. You gotta give it back, as simple as that. Second, uh, the fourth thing I wanna talk about is that two times as much money is used is in, uh, from the water sewer revenue as it is from last year, is gonna be pulled out of the, the water sewer fund. It does not make any sense. Last year, it was a certain amount, now it's twice that much. Where is, what is, what about us? You know, we need, the end of budget, it says that infrastructure improvement we, will be needed as, uh, done as needed. The whole infrastructure needs to be done. You know, we're not talking about Lake Michigan water, anything. We need something safe for our families. The infrastructure needs to be improved. And even though you said it's some, you're gonna say it's something in budget, there's nothing in that budget that says any infrastructure improved. There's only a $60,000 study, another study in the sewer fund for, um, related to the water. We're paying almost $2.5 million, but we're gonna get to April 2019, and there's absolutely nothing in here for the residents. I think that's unfair. Now, even though we expect, um, revenue of 2.5 million, we, we also are gonna get, in that 2.5 million, we're gonna get over $900,000 for the sewer fund. Now, CERNIAC from Robinson Engineering came, that, came in and said they need improvements for about 582 for stuff that's mandatory from W R D. We had the money. They're gonna take the sewer money and spend it on something that has absolutely nothing to do with sewer. I don't understand why we raised the residents' rates. We spending money 'cause we get so much money, and then all of a sudden, we have to go get a loan. That's ridiculous. And then it's not in the budget. And then all through that budget, you goes, uh, the budget goes, the mayor has designated. When you say the mayor has designated, it doesn't include trustees. I thought we were here to watch the money. So I'm just saying, there's five reasons right there why this budget is not balanced, because when you have a balanced budget, it means that you have revenue on this side, and then you have expenditures on this side. We have more expenditures than we do revenue. Something needs to be cut back. And we need to start addressing what the residents need, because, as I said again, we're not only talking about the, um, improvements to the infrastructure, which is needed hardly, badly. This infrastructure is almost 65 years old. It's crumbling as we speak. We need to improve the infrastructure. We need to maintain the housing here, keep people here. They're leaving left and right, because the first thing they say, a pipe busted in the house, I can't get this fixed. The infrastructure needs to be addressed. I know you said you got it in your plan, but what about now? We have been in 20 years talking about getting this infrastructure fixed. You know, it's, I, I'll wait till you and the clerk stop.
Uh, you don't have to go across, because it seems like you're talking to the audience in close to the main. So continue.
Okay, and, and so you shouldn't interrupt me while I'm talking.
I'm not interrupting.
Okay. And you shouldn't even be speaking.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, we don't need to go back and forth to mayor, because mayor's running the meeting, and you was interrupting my conversation.
Madam trustee, madam trustee, are you through with your time?
No.
Are you through with your time?
I'm not finished, you know? I'm not finished with my, I'm not finished with my conversation. I was waiting till you and Marv were finished, interrupted me.
What you said with your time?
No, I'm not finished. So as I was, as I was stating. As I was stating, if the residents are gonna pay that much money, $2.5 million is anticipated, anticipated revenue that we get, we should get something out of our money. Now, the residents along Yates and South Srosberg had a recent incident where they were out of water for a day and a half. You pay, you pay your water bill every month, and you kinda trying to tell me that we can't come in and say, well, we need to fix a pipe in your area, and that you, we didn't, you already paid your water bill, you can't get it fixed? Let's be real, you don't have to do the whole tally at one time. You need to address the issue at hand. We have had this problem for a long time. We need to do something about it. That's why residents are so upset. There's nothing being done for the residents here. You know, so I'm just saying, all this money is coming in and out, MFTs we're getting, the money is used for everything else but what is intended to. So I'm, I'm finished with that now.
Any other question?
I have a question, I have a comment, Mayor.
Oh.
I want everybody to know that I disagree with a lot of what she said. The one thing I will say, though, that we still do have outstanding is, the treasurer, you heard her say it again last night, she is following up with the attorneys to get in writing the answer on the operational transfers versus the advances. We talked about that at the budget hearing back in May, we talked about it last week, we talked about it last night. Secondly, we are living within our means. We have not lived within our means for years here. The revenues, if you look at page five of the budget, shake your head all you want, the revenues on page five are listed here along with the expenses. I'm happy to sit down. Trustee Grant is happy to sit down. The treasurer, the finance director, any of us are happy to sit down and talk with any of you about questions you have. This is a balanced budget, we are living within our means, and it is realistic expectations about what our revenue sources are this year.
Excuse me, we're not, we're not gonna sit here and blurt out in the audience. I'm sorry. We are not going to sit here. Nobody's speaking to you, ma'am.
She's addressing.
No, she is not addressing you. We will not go back and.
Now I'm not talking to you.
Then thank you, 'cause we will not go back and forth and do this. That's not how meetings are conducted. That's not how I conduct meetings. We will not go back and forth. You had a chance to talk about public comment.
We are children. We are not children.
You're acting like one.
You've got five minutes to talk.
You're acting like one right now, ma'am.
Any more questions? Suck it up until next week. Okay? If your basement is flooded, suck it up till next week, because you had your three minutes. That don't work for me, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the room. Yes, call the room.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I need a second. Move by trustee Brewer, second. The motion was moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Tate.